1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 199 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099
Let's go. The twenty-fourth day of the second regular session of the twenty-second Congress will now come to order. May we all take a moment to praise Him. Very well, go. Chipper.
Senator Aritza.
Yes.
Senator Gresham. Senator Figuer.
Yes.
Senator Collin. Floor Leader Harper.
Amen.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ness. Senator Palak.
Yes.
Senator Furman. Senator Romolo.
Amen.
Senator Urosamal.
Hey, I'm here, man.
Senator Wali.
Yes.
Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members are present.
We have a forum to transact business. Next item, reading of the journal for Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to you again. And all honorable members, staff, and all those who are observing our session this morning by whatever means. I move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
Good morning.
Moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of our journal. Those in favor say aye. A motion made.
Aye.
We now dispense with the reading of the journal. Chipper, next item.
Next item is item five, presidential communications. We have one and it's number twenty-two dash one thirty-three.
Okay, there you have it, Chairman Figuer. Fun things for electoral election and the KCRP, I mean, the ANP are become law. So, sign that, Chipper. Next item.
Item six, SSM Supreme Court communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next.
Item seven, member communications, none also, Mr. Speaker.
Next.
Item number eight, departmental communications, we have one and it's number twenty-two dash fourteen.
Hmm, sign that. Interesting. Next item.
Item number nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item number ten, state communications, we have one and it's number twenty-two dash oh seven.
Sign that, Chipper. Next item.
Item eleven, state, state Supreme Court communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item number twelve, municipality on communications, none also, Mr. Speaker.
Side it.
Item number thirteen, foreign government communications, we have one and it's number twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Okay, sign that, Chipper. Exciting.
Miscellaneous communications for item number fourteen, none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're now on our order of the day. And then fifteen, standing committee reports. Do we have any standing committee report, Chipper?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for, as of now, for item number fifteen, we do, we do not have any standing committee reports.
Okay, next item.
Item number sixteen, special committee reports, none also, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item seventeen, assignment of measures and communications, please refer to referral sheet number twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Okay, members and especially Chairman, review that for your planning purposes. Next item.
Unfinished business for item number eighteen, none at the moment, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're now on the bill calendar. Any bill?
As of now, we do not have any bills, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker. But we just, Mr. Chair.
Congress is back in session. We're now on the bill calendar. Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Motion to withdraw the following bills and put on today's agenda: CP number 22-90, CP number 22-93, CP number 22-94, CP number 22-95, and CP number 22-97.
Chair.
It has been moved and seconded that the following bills: 22-90, 93, 94, 95, and 97 be withdrawn from committees and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Those in favor of that motion say aye.
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 Motion carried. Those bills are now withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Chief Clerk. Congress is back in session, so we have several bills that were withdrawn from committee and placed on the calendar for action. Chief Clerk, first bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the bill calendar now is, uh... The first one is on Congressional Bill Number 22-90 for first reading. CP number 22-90 is a bill for not to further amend Title 24 of the Code of the Federated States of Magnesia annotated as amended by amending Section 801 thereof to make an efficient vessel and property thereon used in or connected with a commission of a crime within the exclusive economic zone of ESM to be subject to forfeiture and for other purposes.
Chairman Romolo.
Move for passage of the bill for on the first reading.
Chair.
It has been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CP number 22-90. Discussion. Any discussion?
Speaker, point of information.
State your point, Chairman Figueroa.
Yeah, I stepped out of the room, so I wasn't sure if there was a motion to withdraw and place on this bill.
Already.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Okay, any further discussion? Chairman Romolo.
Speaker.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Out of order, you already did that. You didn't? You haven't done it?
You did. Already, already.
Yeah.
I seconded.
Yes, okay, so...
So, recess, Mr. Speaker.
Discussion.
Sure.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
CP 22-90. Any...
Question. Speaker. Speaker.
Yes, who's that? Palik. Chairman Palik.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to express my view on this bill. I know there are people who are listening, and for myself, I'd like to share my views. Mr. Speaker, you know, this bill, as explained by Vice Chairman Christian, simply expands the four feature from our territorial zone to our exclusive economic zone. There is concern. My concern on this is, quote, "on the universal international law of the sea implication" and also implication on one of the greatest revenue source to our nation, that's our fishing fees, which most catches are within our EEZ 12 miles. My concern really, Mr. Speaker, is the timing of this bill. If it ain't broke, why fix it? And I think that I'm concerned about the timing of this bill. Secondly, Mr. Speaker, recently, the President submitted the National Oceanic Fisheries Investment Policy. I read a portion of that policy, and there are some elements that are inconsistent or that where this bill might be counterproductive to that policy that the President recently submitted to Congress. Third, Mr. Speaker, you know, when we talk of foreign investment, at this particular point in time, the greatest source of income for investment is our fishing. And if there is anything that we do, it must be to protect that industry, that source of income for us. I don't see the intent of this bill doing that. Finally, as some of you stated, I look at the economic, financial analysis and justification for this, and I simply cannot find it. And I, looking at it closer, it appears to me more on enforcement rather than on business income and financial benefit to this nation. While I applaud the effort of the executive to address this issue, I'm very concerned that the adverse impact of this bill could be very severe and negative to this country. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Palik, for a good explanation of your interest of view the bill. Chairman, you have the floor.
Yes.
Oh, I thought Chairman Perman was trying to reach his mic. Okay, Chairman Rosamal.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just so, I want my vote not to mean anything to the fishing companies and to the ESM. Our discussing this bill and voting if we are to defeat or kick out this bill from our table is not an indication to the fishing companies that, and I hope they're not listening, that they can go out in the EEZ and do as Vice Chairman Christian was saying, do anything and everything because they're not gonna be... Their boats are not gonna be, and fishing gear and everything not gonna be, what you call it, forfeited.
Well, thank you. I think based on the gravity of the offense that they committed in the EEZ, they are still subject to all kinds of other penalties. That is fines or then criminal prosecutions of their captains or crew. But the point there, the idea to leave that as the status quo is to make sure that the vessels are not forfeited in the sense that they will not do any fishing. In lieu of forfeiting the vessel, the current law allows the court to use fines or puns. So those can be in lieu of the forfeiture of the vessel itself, which should be allowed to go then to more fishing.
So is that allowed under the, is it the PNA or the other agreements? Where a vessel violating any of the member countries EEZ is... Is able to come in again and fish? I thought that when vessel violated any of the members' laws, they are black marketed and given to FAA to inform them that they cannot use a boat that has been used in a commission of a crime or violation to come back into the, to our fishing grounds.
Yes, depending on the gravity of the offense and, you know, if there is no imposition of other conditions, like when you impose a fine or a puns, you also impose certain kind of conditions. But that black marketing, uh... Blacklisting of a vessel, I think it's basically a... Something enforcement mechanism of the PNA, and the judiciary can also impose that. But right now, the idea behind our current law is to just make sure that the vessels remain free to continue their fishing and, you know, they can pay off whatever fines in a few days of fishing, you know, those kind of things. So we want to encourage instead of discouraging the ongoing fishing, economic activities in our EEZ. Okay, any other discussion?
Question.
Question.
What's just been called for? There is no objection. Discussion is closed. We will forward by roll call on first reading. Chief Clerk.
Senator Arrieta. Senator Christian. Senator Figueroa.
No.
Senator Collin. Floor Leader Harper.
No, ma'am.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Nat. Senator Palik.
No.
Senator Perman.
No.
Senator Romalo.
No.
Senator Rosamal.
Speaker. What a privilege.
State your point before you cast your vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I thought we were in recess when I was yanking away my mouth, and I would, with your permission, request that the Chief Clerk deleted all the comments that I made, especially referencing people listening into the microphone that I'm using. Thank you.
Cast your vote. Cast your vote.
Senator Rosamal. Senator Rosamal. Senator Wally.
No.
Speaker Semenah.
No.
Mr. Speaker, we have one yes and 11 no's.
Oh, Speaker, this is a record breaking.
For that reason, CP number 22-90 does not pass Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number 22-93 for first reading. CP number 22-93. CP number twenty-two dash ninety-three is a bill for an act to amend Public Law Number twenty-two dash forty-eight by amending section five thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figuer.
Move for the passage of the said bill on first reading.
Chairman.
Then moved and seconded that Congress passed on first reading CP number twenty-two dash ninety-three. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. We will forward by roll call of members on first reading. Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker.
Short resist subject to call of the chair. Yeah. Congress is back in session. We're still about to forward. Chief Clerk, first reading.
Senator Arrietaz.
Yes.
Senator Christian.
Yes.
Senator Figuer. Ninety-three. Senator Figuer.
No.
Senator Coland. Floor Leader Harper.
For the three sixty, yes.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Nat. Senator Palig.
Yes.
Senator Perman. Senator Romalo.
For the decision that the Chuk delegation made on the sixty, yes.
Senator Ursumal. Senator Ursumal. Senator Wally.
Yes.
Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, eleven members voted for the said bill under first reading.
CP number twenty-two dash ninety-three has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number twenty-two dash ninety-four for first reading. CP number twenty-two dash ninety-four is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty dash sixty as amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty dash sixty-five, twenty dash seventy-five, twenty dash eighty-five, twenty dash ninety-seven, twenty dash one fifty, twenty-one dash sixty-nine, twenty-one dash eighty-four, twenty-one dash one hundred, twenty-one dash one twenty-nine, twenty-one dash one sixty-three, twenty-one dash one seventy-three, twenty-one dash one eighty-seven, and twenty-two dash eleven by amending section five thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Move for the passage of the bill on first reading.
Again.
Then moved and seconded that Congress passed on first reading CP number twenty-two dash ninety-four. Discussion. Any discussion?
Question.
Question has been called for. There is no objection. Discussion is closed. We will forward by roll call of members on first reading. Chief Clerk.
Senator Arrietaz.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figuer.
Yes.
Senator Coland. Floor Leader Harper.
Oi.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Nat. Senator Palig.
Yes.
Senator Perman. Senator Romalo.
Hey, bye.
Senator Ursumal.
Okay, down of the abstaining.
Thank you. Senator Wally.
Yes.
Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted for the said bill under first reading.
CP number twenty-two dash ninety-four has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number twenty-two dash ninety-five for first reading. CP number twenty-two dash ninety-five is a bill for an act to further amend section nine of Public Law Number twenty dash one thirty-one as amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty dash one fifty-four, twenty dash one fifty-nine, twenty dash one seventy-two, twenty dash one eighty-seven, twenty-one dash oh three, twenty-one dash ten, twenty-one dash thirty-eight, and twenty-one dash eighty-one to change the language in the funding previously appropriated to fund enhancing tourism for the state of Kosci and for, and for other uses and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Move for the passage of the bill on first reading.
Again.
Then moved and seconded that Congress passed on first reading CP number twenty-two dash ninety-five. Short resist subject to call of the chair. Back in session. We're still discussing CP twenty-
Question.
Hi. Question has been called for. If there is no objection, discussion is closed. We will forward by roll call of members on first reading. Chief Clerk.
Senator Arrietaz.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Christian. CP number twenty-two dash ninety-five.
Short resist.
Short resist. Vice Speaker was bothering me, so I was not paying attention.
Short resist subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're forwarding. Chief Clerk, call the next member.
Senator Christian.
Reluctantly, yes.
Senator Figuer. Senator Figuer. Senator Coland. Floor Leader Harper.
For my beloved colleagues from Kosci, yes.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Nat. Senator Palig.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Christian. Yes.
Senator Perman.
Yes.
Senator Romalo.
For my number one Chairman Wally, yes.
Senator Ursumal. Senator Urosamal? Senator Urosamal? Senator Urosamal? Senator Urosamal? Senator Wally? Senator Wally?
Yes. Yes.
Speaker Semena? Speaker Semena?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all twelve members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading. Mr. Speaker, all twelve members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
Okay, CP number twenty-two dash ninety-five has passed conference on first reading. Next bill. Okay, CP number twenty-two dash ninety-five has passed conference on first reading. Next bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number twenty-two dash ninety-seven for first reading. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number twenty-two dash ninety-seven for first reading. CP number twenty-two dash ninety-seven is a bill for act two. CP number twenty-two dash ninety-seven is a bill for act two. Further amend public law number twenty-one dash eighty as amended by public laws numbers twenty-one dash ninety-nine, twenty-one dash one-ten, Further amend public law number twenty-one dash eighty as amended by public laws numbers twenty-one dash ninety-nine, twenty-one dash one-ten, twenty-one dash one forty-three, twenty-one dash one eighty-one, twenty-one dash one forty-three, twenty-one dash one eighty-one, twenty-one dash one eighty-eight, twenty-one dash two fourteen, twenty-one dash two forty-two, twenty-one dash one eighty-eight, twenty-one dash two fourteen, twenty-one dash two forty-two, and twenty-two dash nineteen by amending section four thereof and twenty-two dash nineteen by amending section four thereof to change the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to change the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompeii State and for other purposes. to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompeii State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre? Chairman Figuerre?
Move for the passage of the bill on first reading. Move for the passage of the bill on first reading.
Aye then. Aye then.
Then moved and seconded at conference pass on first reading, CP number twenty-two dash ninety-seven. Then moved and seconded at conference pass on first reading, CP number twenty-two dash ninety-seven. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, there's no objection.
But just a short request. But just a short request.
Short request? Go ahead. Short request? Go ahead.
Yeah, um, for the public project lawyer Yeah, um, for the public project lawyer to please print the section on yap. to please print the section on yap. Uh, so I can look at this because that twenty-one dash eighty kinda clink clink in my head. Thank you. Uh, so I can look at this because that twenty-one dash eighty kinda clink clink in my head. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Are we in recess? Are we in recess?
No, uh, we're not in recess. No, uh, we're not in recess.
Short recess, please. Short recess, please.
Short recess subject to call of the chair. Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Our call, Chipper, first reading.
For first reading of CP number twenty-two dash ninety-seven, Senator Arrietaz?
Yes.
Senator Christian?
Aye ma'am.
Senator Figuerre? Senator Collin? Floor Leader Harper?
Aye.
Vice Speaker Moses? Senator Neth? Senator Pallik?
Yes.
Senator Berman? Senator Romalo?
Aye ma'am.
Senator Urosamal?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Wally?
Yes.
Speaker Semena?
Yes. Chairman Figuerre is back.
Senator Figuerre?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, all twelve members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
Uh, CP number twenty-two dash ninety-seven has passed conference on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Okay, Chairman Romalo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Most of do withdraw CP number twenty-two dash ninety-eight on today's... Chair.
Then moved and seconded that CP number twenty-two dash ninety-eight be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With may.
Aye.
And carried CP number twenty-two dash ninety-eight is withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Okay, uh, short recess.
Yes.
Okay.
Then moved and seconded that Congress passed on first reading CP number 22-98. Discussion, any discussion? If none, and if there's no objection, discussion is closed. We will forward by roll call of members on first reading.
Senator Arrietaz?
Yes.
Senator Christian? Senator Figuer?
Yes.
Senator Collin? Floor Leader Harper?
Aye.
Vice Speaker Moses? Senator Neath? Senator Palick?
Yes.
Senator Perman? Senator Romalo?
Aye.
Senator Urso Mal?
Yes ma'am.
Senator Wally?
Yes.
Speaker Semena?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all twelve members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
Okay, CP number 22-98 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Short recess please, Mr. Speaker.
Call out the chair.
You note my...
Mr. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Okay, if there would be no objection, we will now move on to the next item, resolution calendar.
Speaker.
Where's your resolution, Chief Judge?
Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any resolutions under resolution calendar.
Yes, Speaker.
Uh, Chairman Perman?
Yeah, motion to withdraw 22-52 into our resolution calendar for today.
There is some motion.
Take it.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 22-52 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action.
Short recess please.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Congress is back in session. We're still on the resolution calendar. First resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The first resolution under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number 22-52 for adoption. CR number 22-52 is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Albert Falcom to serve as a board member of the Federated States of Magnesia Social Security Board of Directors representing the national government.
Chairman, permit?
I saw move for his adoption.
Right.
Then.
Move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 22-52. Discussion, any discussion? Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wanted to say something further occurred for all those nomination resolutions, but I believe they may not be directly related to their contents. But if you would allow me, Mr. Speaker, you know, this is my way of trying to appeal to the honorable members to kindly give sympathy and mercy to all those nomination resolution. And by saying that, I would like to ask if you can allow me to cite a chapter in the Bible, in the book of First Corinthians, chapter 13. It says, and I quote, "If I speak in the tongues of men and of angels, but I have not love, I am a noisy gong or a clanging simba. And if I have prophetic powers and understand all mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have all faith so as to remove mountains, but have not love, I am nothing. If I give away all I have, and if I deliver up my body to be burned, but have not love, I gain nothing. Love is patient and kind. Love does not envy or boast; it is not arrogant or rude; it does not insist on its own way; it is not irritable or resentful; it does not rejoice at wrongdoing, but rejoices with the truth. Love bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Love never ends. As for prophecies, they will pass away; as for tongues, they will cease; as for knowledge, it will pass away; for we know in part, and we prophesy in part. But when the perfect comes, the partial will pass away."
My vote is yes.
When I was a child, I spoke like a child. I thought like a child. I reasoned like a child. When I became a man, I gave up childish ways. For now, we see in a mirror dimly, but then face to face, now I know in part, then I shall know fully, even as I have been fully known. So now faith, hope, and love abide these three. But the greatest of this is love. So I only hope that members, you know, have love in order to sympathize and have mercy on all these nomination resolution and for for all of them. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Floor Leader Harper, for those wise words of support. Okay, any further discussion on the resolution 22-52? If none.
Speaker, Mr. Speaker, you should recall Floor Leader back from Guam. He's been reading Gideon's Bible too many times already.
Okay, how do you know that?
There is no further discussion. The discussion is closed. We will, this is a nomination. We will vote by secret ballot, and it requires at least ten votes for adoption. Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Please.
Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, announce the result.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Out of the 12 members that are present, we have a total of 10 yeses and two nos, two are not counted, absent.
Okay, for that reason, resolution number 22-52 is adopted by Congress. Mr. Falcom is confirmed as one of the Social Security Board members. Let's give him a round of applause, please. Thank you. Next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution is Congressional Resolution Number 22-56 for adoption. CR number 22-56 is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Johnson as Elmo to serve as the FSM Council General in Honolulu, Hawaii.
Okay, Chairman, what is it?
To move.
Then.
And move.
Then.
But Congress adopt resolution number 22-56. Okay, discussion.
Speaker.
Who's that?
Guam.
Yeah.
Floor Leader.
Don't, please don't read again.
Please stop videos, please stop videos, sorry.
Simply want to ask those two that voted against the first one to kindly join the tent to vote for that nomination resolution for Johnson Elmo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? If none, and if there is no objection, discussion is closed. Same, this is a nomination. We will vote by secret ballot, and at least 10 votes are required for adoption. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, announce the result.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Out of the 12 members that are present, we have a total of eight yeses, four nos, and two that are not counted, absent.
Okay, for that reason, resolution number 22-56 is not adopted. Mr. Elmo is not confirmed. Okay.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Vice Chairman Christian.
I move that we recess until tomorrow at 11:00 your time.
Second.
Then.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution is Congressional Resolution Number 22-57 for adoption. CR number 22-57 is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mrs. Jane J. Gigiel to serve as the permanent representative of the Federated States of Magnesia to the United Nations.
Okay, Chairman, what is it?
To move.
Then. Then.
Move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 22-57. Discussion, any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. This is another nomination. We will vote by secret ballot. And yes, by secret ballot. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, announce the result.
Out of the twelve members that are present, we have a total of eight yeses, four noes, and two that are not counted, absent.
For that reason, the resolution 22-57 is not adopted by Congress. Ms. Chigil is not confirmed for the position. Okay, next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number 22-47 for adoption. CR number 22-47 is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mrs. Alina Paul Akinaka to serve as the Secretary of the Department of Resources and Development of the Federated States of Magnesia.
Okay, Chairman Nett.
Thank you, Speaker. I so move for the adoption of this resolution.
Chair again.
It's been moved and noted that Congress adopted resolution number 22-47. Discussion, any discussion?
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess, subject to go of the chair.
Mr. Speaker.
Congress is back in session. Chief Perk announce the result.
Out of the twelve members that are present, we have a total of eight yeses, three noes, and two that are not counted, absent.
For that reason, the motion to reconsider is not adopted. That's it for that one particular nomination, okay?
Mr. Speaker?
Vice, yeah, Vice Chairman Christian.
You know, just as our forefathers have learned to cast their eyes on the water and look at the clouds and say tomorrow will be a good day or it will be a bad day. Based on that, I move that we recess until tomorrow at ten.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning, chuk time.
Chuk, uh, chuk time.
Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Now stand in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning, chuk time.